In the September 2nd, 2025 city council meeting, and I would ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, sir.
[inaudible]
Pledge of Allegiance?
I'll do it then after.
Barazza, absent. Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Loman, absent. Peeper?
Here.
Farenbach, absent. Anderson?
Here.
Vocal singer, absent. Ten present for absent.
Very good. I switched the agenda here, one, because I was waiting to make sure we had the quorum, and we just got it, so I appreciate all of you who did come. So at this time then, I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, in what is obviously a time of great challenge in the United States of America and in our world around us, we are ever appreciative of the sound and solid members of the city councils that we have who closely watch over our community and keep their eyes on everything and that make sure that Batavia is running smoothly and under the very honorable way we've always run the community. We ask tonight for a special blessing to be showered upon those from our community and from throughout the United States who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask for the special blessing to be touched upon each one of them. Also tonight, we ask for understanding and vision and cooperation from the members of the city council as they go about acting on the issues before them, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each of them, that we are here to do what they feel is in the very best interest of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Who would like to do the pledge? Alderman Ray?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can we do the roll call already? All right, I have one thing to add to the roll call. I'm sorry to report that this past Friday, Laura and I were visited by Alderman Vocal Singer, who told us because of pressing matters within her family, her husband's an air traffic controller and he's working all the time now because of the shortness of those. She says she cannot break the family away from the family that much to continue to be an alderman, so she's going to submit her letter of resignation to you, and will be acting on that at the next city council meeting. I want you all to know this, and as you know, we have a procedure that's been followed for a long time, that when we have a vacancy in the city council, we solicit residents of the ward that the vacancy occurs in, and they submit an application to us that's then circulated to all the members of the city council, and then on a future meeting very soon, we will have an interview process for all those who want to apply for that position. And then at the end of that interview conversation, I'm just talking about you.
Okay.
At the end of that, we have an ability for the city council then to pick who is going to be the new alderman from that ward. So you all get a say in that, but I was just sharing with them, Alderman Vocal Singer, that you have indicated you're going to be resigning, and so we're letting that word go out so we can solicit applications. You have to send, give me a letter of resignation. We'll act at the next city council meeting, and then we will put it out for the residents of your ward to make application, and then when we get the applications, they will all come down here at night, and all the aldermen will interview them, and then they will have a vote amongst themselves as to who should be the new alderman from the seventh ward. So I just, you missed me saying, sorry to see you go and everything else, but...
Sorry that I am...
I know, it's just the way it is, but I appreciate your good efforts that you've had for us, and I'm sure you're going to continue to have good efforts and well intentions toward the community of Batavia, so we're not going to let you leave town. We're just sorry to see you leaving the city council.
Okay, can I say just something very quickly?
Sure.
It was a really hard decision, harder than I thought it would be. I'm a little more emotional than I could have guessed. And the reasons are not that I don't find value in this. I have immensely enjoyed the time here, learning from the experts that we have in all the areas, you know, that show up on these agendas that are not my wheelhouse or background. I've immensely enjoyed sitting on the environmental committee with Alderman Beck, and then when we had the committee to help the Carriage Crest and make sure that that project went through, those are some of my favorite things, the trip to Springfield. But this is largely because my husband worked over 300 hours of overtime last year in the form of six-day weeks and holdovers, and that's hard when we have small people that don't drive yet. That's really the crux of the problem, so I am very sad. I value everybody that sits at this table and all of the staff, so thank you very much. It's been a wonderful experience, a great learning experience, and yeah, keep doing great work, everybody.
As I've already said, but I'll say it again, we're very sorry to lose you and wish you the best.
Thank you.
And maybe a day will come in the future when you can run for alderman's job again.
Fantastic.
But you get to continue. You haven't given me a letter of resignation officially yet, so you can vote tonight, and I assume you'll give it to me in the next few days, and then, as I told the city council, we will submit that at the beginning of the next city council meeting, and then we'll put the word out that we do it as we always do. Anybody in your ward that's qualified can apply, and then we'll have a meeting amongst all the aldermen, and they get to interview them, and then they will vote as to who should be the new alderman from your ward to finish out your term.
All right.
So that's the story and the road that we're taking, so everybody understands. All right, moving then to, I guess we've talked about items to remove, added or changed on the agenda. I'm going to ask at the end of the meeting for an executive session for a discussion by the staff on the sale of electricity. We think there's some questions that have been put out there that some of you have asked, so we wanted to just have a brief conversation about what some of the answers to the things we've been asked are all about. So I will, do we need to add to that to the agenda?
Yes.
Would somebody care to make that into a motion?
I'll make that motion that we have an executive session to discuss the sale or purchase of electricity.
Second. Move by Wolf, second by Sulfah, for their amendment to the agenda for sale of electricity. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach, absent. Anderson?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza, absent. Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Motion approved. All right, moving then to the consent agenda. Alderman Beck, do you have this?
Elder person, Baron does.
I didn't hear what you said.
Elder person, Baron does. Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follow: Approved minutes from August 12th, 2025. The CED monthly report for July 2025. Payroll fund totals for 8/29/2025 in the amount of $1,072,687.18. The AP total for the September 2nd council meeting is $4,100,256.45. Sorry, I had to write that out. So it's $4,100,256.45. 2024 fire pension municipal compliance report and 2025 tax levy request. 2024 police pension municipal compliance report and 2025 tax levy request. Resolution 2025-105-R personnel request. Resolution 2025-108-R surplus IT equipment, old Cisco phones. Resolution 2025-109-R network switch purchase for Electric Skoda and City Intergov. Resolution 2025-103-R authorizing change order number one with electric conduit construction for the 130 Shemway Avenue conduit installation project. Resolution 2025-104-5 authorizing change order number one with electric conduit construction for the Redant Road BNSF crossing project. Resolution 2025-105-R authorizing fiber software agreement with three GIS. Resolution 2025-106-R approving agreement with Quad Plus Testing for the Northeast Distribution Substation Maintenance. An ordinance 2025-44 amendments to the official zoning map. Multiple properties at 103 and 107 Union Avenue, 180 and 198 Water Street. Your honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion approved. Second approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody in the council have any questions on any of these items? All right, ask the clerk to call the roll.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
On our Google pages or on our Facebook, or you can also go on our website and see all of our wonderful reviews from our customers because we truly appreciate that. That's how we grow our business is to get those reviews. So whether you're a new homeowner, you're replacing an old fence, you need an estate gate, you're looking for a repair, managing a business that needs commercial fencing, we're the ones who've got you covered. You can find us, like I said, on Facebook, and you can also find us at completefence.com. And then you can call us at 630-231-9550. We just want to say on behalf of Complete Fence, we greatly appreciate this opportunity. And for us, you're welcoming us to your community. It really, truly means a lot. And we're so proud to call Batavia our home now. And we're looking forward to serving both the residents and the commercial businesses of the industry going forward. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Can you tell us? I think there's probably some people watching on TV or whatever that maybe didn't quick get your address. Can you give us, say again, a phone number or an address if somebody wants to talk to you about ordering a fence, how they go about doing it?
Oh yeah, for sure. So we're at 940 Kingsland Drive. And our phone number is the 630-231-9550. You call that. If you're a residential customer, you'll press one and then it'll lead you to one of our residential people that will then direct you and be able to answer questions and set up potentially site visits with one of our salespeople here like Dale. And then there's also another number you can have press two and that would go to commercial department. And then that's where you would get somebody that would set you up with somebody, one of our commercial salesmen to go through that whole process. And there's also for HR and if you're looking for careers or anything like that. So you can call that number for everything. Also on our website, that says completefence.com, there's all sorts of, you'll find our phone number there and you'll also find links for getting a quote. You can fill out forms there as well. There's a link for also career opportunities and tells you a little bit about our residential side and also our commercial side of the industry that we do.
A company like yours, the good services you are now providing, I think there's people out there that were very interested when they listened to what you're saying, wanted to know whether they can contact you. So I'm glad you just gave us all those numbers and addresses because I think you'll get some calls on us. So appreciate the good work you're doing. Anybody in the council have any questions? Well, thank you. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it too.
Thanks for coming to Batavia. All right. What matters to the public? All right, we'll go to regular agenda then. First is 8.1, Presentation, BATAC Quarterly Report.
Hello, everybody. I am Regan Bowle. I am the chairperson for the Batavia Active Transportation Advisory Commission. And I'm here tonight to give us our quarterly update and fill you in on some of the things we've been working on since I stood here about three months ago. And if you have any questions throughout the night, feel free to ask me while I'm here today. So basically, since I stood here three months ago, we've been doing our best to show ourselves more in the community. So we've been taking advantage of a lot of our local community events, such as the farmers markets, the evening in the park with bands. And next coming up, we're actually even going to be at the Fireman's Open House on the 28th. So we're trying to use the community tent. We're trying to get out there and show the public, you know, what, one, that we exist and two, what we do. And been fielding a lot of questions from our community members. One, they're impressed that our town has an Active Transportation Advisory Commission. So I applaud you guys for that. And we get a lot of feedback on various subjects, as you can imagine. One of which we actually stood here and talked about a couple of months ago about the e-bikes and scooters and whatnot. We've been getting a lot of feedback on that. I wanted to let you know tonight during the update that it's not done with us. You know, we're still actively discussing it in our meetings. We're still actively soliciting feedback from the community as well as the commission member, council members. And we're also paying close attention to what our neighboring communities are doing. ABC News, for example, this evening even had an update talking about what other surrounding communities are doing as far as e-bike regulation laws and such. So I didn't want to get into a debate or a discussion tonight about that, but I just wanted to let the council know that it's something that's really much on the forefront of our discussion topics. And we hope that some of our new additions to the commission, which we'll talk about here later, are going to help us educate that and bring another wealth of knowledge on that subject. So looking forward to that. Among getting out and visiting the other, or not visiting, but getting out and hitting the farmers markets and whatnot, we did have an opportunity to cover the children's activity tent at the farmer's market just a couple of weeks ago. And that came with a huge success. We were busy all day. We were making buttons for bike safety and coloring and bicycle coloring books and things like that. But again, more importantly, it was showing ourselves to the community and talking about these topics. So keep looking for us as we get out. And if you have any other suggestions for any other kind of community events that you think would be beneficial for the commission, don't hesitate to reach out and let us know where you think we'd really be able to spread our knowledge. Another thing that has happened in the past three months, well, actually hasn't happened, but I stood here and let you know that we had once again applied for our bike-friendly community application. Again, there's a lot of help from Max on that one. But they're still reviewing that application. But as Andrew was nice enough to point out from Public Works, that there is a survey that's available to the public. And we're going to post this on our Facebook page from the commission. But just to speak to it on record, the survey in regarding to a bicycle-friendly application within your community, that website address is surveymonkey.com/irsandrobert/ B as in boy, F, C as in cat, underscore 2025. And again, we'll post this on our Facebook page, but it's open to the public. And it's part of the plan for when you make an application to be a bike-friendly community, those people that are reviewing that application want to hear from your community too. And so we'll be posting that publicly for other people to respond to. Another item that has been a big topic of discussion within the commission lately has been our pedestrian traffic and our pedestrian traffic technology cameras. I think we even mentioned that at one of our last updates too. Once again, Max is very helpful with the commission and gave us some statistics that I can share with you tonight. This is an hourly comparison by day through the month of May 19th, 2025, through August 11th of pedestrian monitoring at the Depot Museum. Now, we know that's one of the busiest areas in our community for where there's pedestrian traffic. It's an intersection of downtown. It's an intersection of the bike path. We used this as a control study. This was a suggestion of camera placement from the commission to see, one, how this technology is going to work, what kind of data it's going to gather. And two, we figured also that that point being one of our most heavily pedestrian-traveled areas will give us a good reference point to know just where we should be moving these cameras, or counters, I should say, in the future for future projects, other things like that. So that's another topic of discussion that the commission is undertaking. As we wind down the summer months, we're not quite sure where we should be placing these counters throughout the winter. But rest assured, we are going to continue to move them and are still open for suggestions on that as well. And again, it was another topic that was brought up about three months ago at another quarterly update.
Regan?
Yeah.
I would like to add that this one at the Depot Museum is our permanent one. So that one is in the concrete by the kiosk. We also do have a mobile one, but we are not disclosing the location at the time. But we do have this data in an app. So I was able to pull all this information and we can get live information. So if anybody is interested, we'd be happy to share.
Thank you. Thank you for that. One of the last commission meetings, we were discussing the use of that app too. So we're excited to be able to watch stuff in real time, so to speak, too. So thank you for adding that. And then, let's see. We also have, it'll be 8.2, but we also have some personnel changes, as I mentioned too at the last quarterly update. We've kind of been going through a bit of a rebuilding phase with our commission members here at the BATAC. And we're going to have to say goodbye to yet another long-term member of the commission, Jared Heck. Jared Heck has been on the commission for at least five years. He didn't join us this evening, but he's been a wealth of carryover knowledge for us as we replace certain members. And some of us are still growing and learning how the city government works and where we can find our place in there. Jared's been kind of a mainstay for us and was most recently our secretary or note taker, if you will, replacing Nancy, which is still another big shoes to fill. So we will have yet another opening starting next month. But then we also moved around another person. Liam McKay, who has joined us this evening, is our co-chair. As we've been getting out and doing more and more activities and stuff, it's a volunteer position. We've kind of added a little bit of burden to ourselves. So with Liam's help, we'll be able to spread the workload a little bit and keep track of other things as far as community laws, ongoing things with the Bike USA, things like that. So Liam brings a huge amount of experience on these topics from city planning and whatnot. So thank you again, Liam. And then we have two new members that, moving on to item 8.2 tonight. We voted in two new members at our meeting last month. And we'd like to introduce them to you tonight for appointment from Mayor Shelkey, if that's okay. But tonight, we have Michael Loptin and John O'Toole. So these guys are in attendance tonight. So I'd like to give them the opportunity to come up and introduce themselves and talk about themselves a little bit and then maybe get the appointment from the mayor. So thank you.
Anybody want to come up and make some comments?
Hello, my name is John O'Toole. I have lived in Batavia since 2012 over on First Street. And I joined the committee because actually during the summers for the past two and a half years, I commute to St. Charles via my e-scooter. So I just wanted to make sure that there was representation of people that do this outside of recreation and just make sure that the laws, you know, are fair and enforceable. I saw the committee that you had, I believe it was the last committee, you actually discussed the e-bikes and e-scooters and it was very promising what was being discussed and everything seemed very reasonable.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Loptin. I am a 10-plus-year resident, homeowner and resident of Batavia. I live on the 400 block of Webster. I am a 15-year vehicle engineer. I've worked in various positions in mechanical engineering with vehicles and electrification with vehicles. That's where a lot of my passion with accessibility and mobility come from. I'm also an avid bicyclist and runner. I live on the 400 block of Webster, as I said, which just recently got its sidewalk. So thank you very much for that. I greatly appreciate it. But yeah, I have joined the council to get more involved, the advisory board here to be more involved with the city that I have been a longtime resident of. And it's a passion that I have with mobility and accessibility in the city.
Thank you to both of you. And I think as long as we're doing it, why don't, I asked for a motion to approve the appointment of Michael Loptin and John O'Toole to the Batavia Active Transportation Commission for a three-year term. Somebody care to make the motion?
Moved.
Motion in second, any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malaya.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Congratulations, guys. You're in business with us now. So next three years, you're coming to our meetings. So appreciate your good efforts because we do need the advice and viewpoints and ideas how to handle all this new things that are happening on our roads. So appreciate the insights you're bringing. Thank you.
Your honor. Thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you so much for new members, for volunteering and for stepping up. Thank you for being in Batavia and being cyclists and scooterists in Batavia. I did have a question about a project that was brought up, I think, years ago. When the MUTCD switched out their share of the road signage to the bicyclists may use the full lane, we had discussed eventually swapping out all of our signage as well to be compliant. Do we have any sort of a timeline on when those switches will be made?
I do not. I might refer to Public Works on that, but the last time we left it was when Gary was still here and we were still waiting for some changes from Illinois state law to become official.
That's what it was.
And as far as I know, we have not had that on our agenda in the past few month meetings. But it's definitely something that we have discussed quite a bit. And we were kind of also working with Public Works on that. So maybe we can have an update. I don't know if you have an update.
I will have to check back with streets and find out where that is. And I would think that as we do some of the roads, and I'll have to see the extent of it, but we can get back to you and let you know.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you for that. Anybody else have any questions for the?
Any questions? Well, thank you for your report and bringing us two new good members.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving then to item 8.3, Proclamation Suicide Prevention Month, September 2025.
Your honor. Proclamation. Whereas September is recognized globally as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, established to increase awareness of mental health resources and suicide prevention services available in our communities. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, more than 49,000 Americans died by suicide in 2023, making it the 11th leading cause of death overall and the second leading cause of death among individuals ages 10 to 34. Suicide claimed one life approximately every 11 minutes and was preceded by an estimated 1.5 million attempts that year. And whereas, every suicide affects not only the individual, but their family, friends, coworkers and neighbors and the wider community, impacting an estimated 100 or more people per death. And whereas, in response to these realities, the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline was established as a universal entry point for anyone in the United States to reach caring, trained counselors who provide 24/7 support for individuals experiencing mental health-related distress, such as thoughts of suicide, substance use crises, emotional distress and other challenges. People can call or text 988 or chat 988lifeline.org for themselves or if they're concerned about a loved one. And whereas Suicide Prevention Services of America, located in Batavia, Illinois, has been a vital local resource for over two decades and is one of the few agencies in the country offering 24-hour phone lifeline counseling, depression screening, workshops, prevention training, school intervention, support groups and annual awareness events. And whereas, celebrating its 20th anniversary, the Here for Life Walk, a key event in supporting suicide prevention and mental health awareness, will take place Saturday, September 13th, 2025, at Potawatomi Park in St. Charles. And whereas, we urge all residents to recognize the importance of mental health awareness to support those who may be struggling and to prioritize mental wellness as a key component of overall health. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, mayor of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month in Batavia, Illinois, and encourage all citizens to help promote awareness, eliminate stigma and support those affected by suicide and mental illness. I move we accept the proclamation as read.
Motion in second. Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Malaya.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. All right.
I wonder if I could for just one minute?
Go ahead.
I didn't know if I'd make it through reading this tonight. It's almost 11 years, maybe a week more for, my family is, my niece took her own life. And it's still something that it's very hard to talk about. But we have to talk about it. We have to make sure that especially kids can see that there's more than one exit. Right after that happened to another family in town, there was a meeting at the Rotolo Middle School. And that was the main thing that I took out of that from somebody that had been involved in suicide prevention for about 20, 25 years. And that is something that I think people don't realize that there are other doors. There are other ways out. And I think it's incumbent on everybody that's ever been touched by it to keep it out in the forefront and talk about it, especially when you think about how many people every day commit suicide or die by suicide. So I think it's really important that every year that we talk about this and anytime anybody feels the need to talk, they have to know that there are resources out there, especially when we have the great resource of Suicide Prevention Services in town. So I know a lot of people that have volunteered a lot of time there. And it's a tough job to answer that phone call and try to provide somebody with the other way out. So I really like the fact that we did this again this year. Thank you.
We haven't had a motion yet for the?
We voted.
We also have representatives here from Suicide Prevention Services here tonight who wanted to say some words. Stephanie?
Yeah, well, that's where I was going. So please.
Okay, first I want to thank you guys for inviting me in, inviting us in to talk about this so openly and honestly. Because this is something that we've come a long way on in the community because this wasn't something that was easy to talk about. You couldn't say the word suicide in the community out loud because it was so stigmatized. So my name is Stephanie Duinsky and I'm one of the Associate Executive Directors at Suicide Prevention Services in Batavia. Our mission is to open minds, save lives and restore hope through prevention, intervention and postvention using education, advocacy and collaboration in our community. The progress and openness is deeply personal to me and our agency. We've been in this community for 25 years, but our roots go back even further. It goes back to 1979 when our executive director lost her mom to suicide. She was a third grade teacher at the time and didn't know where to turn. Normal, regular grief groups didn't feel right to her to attend because when you lose someone to suicide, the person that you feel anger at, guilt at for your loved one leaving us too soon is the person who passed and yourself and your family. And you can't grieve sometimes in a typical way. And our executive director decided at that point that she wanted to go back to school to become a counselor, to help people like herself who were grieving a loved one and to help people like her mom who had attempted suicide and died by suicide. So three years later, after her mom died, she started our first suicide loss support group that has been going for 43 years now in Aurora. It meets the third Saturday of every month in Aurora at 7:00 PM. It's available for youth and for adults. And we started the group partially to help fight the stigma. And I appreciate that Mr. Wolf, you changed it to died by suicide because a lot of times people do say committed suicide. But committed has a stigma to it. Committed is what happens when someone does something that people feel like is a moral failing or a lack of character or a crime. And we don't want that to be stuck to the person's name when we want to remember them for the life they lived. Saying died by suicide is factual and compassionate. And it focuses on the person and their life and doesn't pass judgment and helps create a space where people feel understood and able to grieve. So they called the group Survivors of Suicide. And from there, the group grew into our agency that provides a continuum of care for suicide prevention, grief and mental health. And this work is also deeply personal to me because growing up in the Fox Valley, I grew up in Algen and I'm now a resident of Batavia. I struggled with social anxiety. I still struggle with social anxiety. As I sat there waiting for my turn to talk, my heart beat in. And what helped me the most was education, learning about it. Because growing up, my family didn't talk about suicide or mental health. I always just thought I was shy. And then as I went to school, I learned that I wasn't alone and that I wasn't the only one who felt that way. And so those classes and the education was life-changing for me. I'm a social worker and a therapist and a community educator now. I talk about my story. And while I was getting my education, I actually took a class by our executive director. And she had us write reflection papers on how our lives had been impacted by mental health and suicide. At that point, I didn't think suicide beyond my own feelings had impacted my life. And so I interviewed friends and family. And I had always heard that my grandpa had died of emphysema. And when I talked to my dad and said, have you ever had anyone in my life die by suicide or attempt suicide? And he said, oh yeah, your grandpa. And I was 27 when I learned this. I was shocked. He died 16 months before I was born. I had never really heard my family talk about him. And I had no idea that that he had passed that way. And I had no idea that my family grieved in silence about what was going on. Still, to this day, many of them still say he died of emphysema because the stigma is ingrained generationally. And sometimes it's too big for people. But as I began speaking to friends and family and loved ones, I also witnessed countless stories of hope and recovery and healing, including my own. That experience taught me something essential that struggling with thoughts of suicide and mental health is not a choice, nor is it a weakness. And they're health issues and should be treated like any other health issue that we face in our community. And they can be treated and prevented when we bring care, resources, information and compassion to the forefront. Yet despite what we know, suicide is still stigmatized. When I go into schools and provide education, sometimes parents will pull their kids from presentations because they don't want them learning about it. But there are many myths and myths thrive on misinformation and stigma. And the first myth I wanted to talk about is talking or asking about suicide puts the idea in somebody's head. And that is absolutely not true. And research actually shows the opposite. It shows that having open, caring, informed, compassionate conversations about suicide can actually reduce risk of harm because it shows people that it's a non-judgment zone. People can go to you. You're a safe space. And sometimes I hear people say, well, people who talk about suicide are just trying to get attention or they're just being dramatic. They don't actually mean it. But nearly 80% of those people who die by suicide show warning signs ahead of time. Speaking up is a cry for help and not a manipulation. And sometimes I hear people say that suicide can't be prevented. It's something that's gonna happen if a person intends to take their life. But a person who's having thoughts of suicide doesn't want to die. They want the pain in their life to go away. They want the circumstances that are hard to go away. Because people who have thoughts of suicide struggle with things like housing. They struggle with things like food security. They struggle with transportation. They struggle with job security. They struggle with mental health issues running in their family. And more than often, they've had a loved one die by suicide. And all of those things are risk factors. And sometimes I hear, "Well, suicide doesn't happen in our community. That's not something that happens to people like us." But suicide crosses every demographic, every age, every religion, every race, every ethnicity, every socioeconomic status. Nationally, the rate of suicide in 2022 and 2023 rose to the highest it's been in 80 years. In King County, more than 200 lives were lost to suicide in the past five years. And sometimes people think that, once someone feels suicidal, nothing will help. But I'll tell you, by working with individuals in Batavia, in St. Charles, in Geneva, in Aurora, that it does. People can recover. People can find ways to manage their emotions. People can heal themselves from trauma. And the facts we highlight isn't just an individual issue. It's a community issue. In 2023, 49,000 Americans died by suicide. That's one every 11 minutes, and one person attempts suicide every 26.6 seconds in the U.S. alone. And these are not just numbers. They're real people with lives, and friends, and family, and coworkers. And if it were other health issues rising at this rate, we would have a more urgent response. But a lot of times I hear mental health issues and suicide referred to as an invisible disease. And just as we respond urgently to any health crisis, our community needs to have accessible, effective suicide prevention. And that's what our agency does. Our agency was founded out of a need. We were on the steering committee for the original National Lifeline, and we provide counseling for all ages, regardless of people's financial situation. We provide it in Batavia. We provide it in Aurora. We provide it virtually. We even provide it in local school districts, including Batavia. Students who don't have transportation, because maybe their parents work two jobs, or maybe they're in activities, or maybe their parents can't afford it, can actually get counseling during the school day in our schools. We have support groups for those who have had a loved one die by suicide, for both adults and youth. We have Survivors of Suicide Attempts Support Groups, as well as support groups for caregivers of those people who have attempted. We provide education for businesses, for schools. We go into schools as young as kindergarten to even talk about emotional regulation, because it builds a foundation for resiliency. And we are the local center for 988 calls. We pick up calls for Kane, Kendall, McHenry, Grundy, and DeKalb. And you don't have to be having thoughts of suicide to call it. That's always something I hear. When I surveyed a local presentation I did, about 50% of adults didn't know what 988 was, and about 40% knew what it was, and then about 10% thought that you only could use 988 if you were suicidal, which is untrue. It's the suicide and crisis lifeline. You can call it 24/7, 365 days a year, if you're struggling, if somebody else is struggling, be it suicide or a mental health crisis. You could call because you're worried about a neighbor, a friend, a coworker, and you don't know what to do. And they can coach you through how to talk to the person. They can talk you through if what you're seeing is warning signs. They can connect you to local resources, no matter where you are in the country. So last year, our agency saw 32 clients who were residents of Batavia, most of which who were struggling financially. Total clients were 150. We provided over 1,500 counseling hours for individuals who were struggling. And we take about 500 calls a month at our center alone, which is about over 6,000 calls a year. We pick up with volunteers. We pick up with paid staff. And even on a holiday, we pick up. And we never deny someone because of inability to pay, because they're uninsured or underinsured. Our counseling scholarship program ensures financial barriers don't stand in the way of healing. So preventing suicide requires all of us to work together as a community. Together, we can save lives. We have to treat suicide as a serious health issue, like we do any other health issue. Educate ourselves on steps to help those who are struggling, and how to connect them with resources. We want to speak openly, compassionately, and accurately about suicide, because silence and misinformation strengthen the stigma that we face. So I want everyone here to be able to share the 988 number, even if you don't know if that person's struggling with suicide. It's a place that they can call and talk, and just have someone to talk to who won't provide judgment, someone who will listen, someone who can connect them with resources. And reach out and volunteer and support local resources that do direct service in your community, because it helps us create resiliency and safety. And practice compassion and self-compassion every day, because sometimes the smallest acts of kindness make the biggest difference with people's days. So I want you guys to remember that suicide is preventable, and recovery is possible. Just because someone has thoughts of suicide at one point of their life doesn't mean they'll stay forever. And it's a health issue that we can respond to, just like any other health issue. And we want to ensure that every neighbor has a chance to find hope and support, because no one should feel like they need to go through any of their struggles alone. And one of my favorite psychologists, Carol Gilligan, once said, "The human voice is a powerful instrument of connection. When we speak in our heard, we realize we're not alone." Thank you. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody in the council have any comments or questions on the line?
Yeah. First off, thank you for all the work you're doing. I'm incredibly proud that we get to host such an amazing, incredible organization in Batavia. I know your organization intimately. I've known folks who have worked there, and it's just amazing the work you do. And I think one thing that I'm taking away from what you shared with us now is that it's not just a hotline. You know, some of the things I heard is support groups. You do talks at both businesses and schools, that you also offer direct counseling and some of the other outreach. If folks want to either volunteer with your organization, or maybe engage some of those services that aren't perhaps direct services, how might they engage with your organization?
Yeah, thank you. That's actually something I left out. So they can contact Suicide Prevention Services at 630-482-9699, or they can go on our website at spsamerica.org to learn more about our services and events. And there's some educational material on there about suicide awareness. And if people are interested in counseling, they call that number, or they can email us at info@spsamerica.org to reach out. And we do counseling even if someone isn't having thoughts of suicide, but, for example, is having trouble finding a counselor that's maybe the right fit, because we believe that part of suicide prevention is helping people get access to mental health care, regardless of their ability to pay.
I would just note, I've had several citizens call me and comment very positively about the ability to what you just offered up to do, to be able to call and discuss and kind of think a different way after they talked to some of your people that are on the phone with them. So this is a working system that works successfully in our community, and I just want to thank you for all the good efforts that your organization and yourself is doing to bring this onward to, hopefully, it's probably never gonna go away, but at least we got somebody out there dealing with a very, very difficult situation. So thank you very much.
I was gonna say, and that's progress, so thank you for that. Because a lot of times I hear people say, "Oh, I've seen this building 1,000 times, but I had no idea where you were." But we're at 528 South Batavia Avenue. We're in the big stone manor that's surrounded by condos. We have a memorial garden for people who have had a loved one die by suicide, and we recently now have a semicolon garden. That's a rock garden where people can come and leave rocks that are meaningful to them or someone else as an act of kindness.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving into item 8.4, Proclamation, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
I have this one, Mayor. A proclamation, whereas pediatric cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among children in the United States, and every year, thousands of children and their families are affected by this life-altering diagnosis. And whereas September has been designated as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month nationwide, symbolized by the gold ribbon to honor children and families fighting cancer, to remember those who have lost their battle, and to celebrate the advances in treatment and survivorship. And whereas raising awareness about childhood cancer encourages earlier detection, supports vital research, and inspires compassion and community action to improve outcomes for all children facing this disease. And whereas Cal's Angels, a St. Charles-based leading childhood cancer foundation, established in 2007 by Tom Suter and Stacy Suter, in memory of their son Cal, that provides vital support to children battling cancer and their families by granting wishes, offering financial assistance, and funding critical research to find new treatments and cures. And whereas, through their mission of fighting pediatric cancer with hope, Cal's Angels brings comfort, joy, and encouragement to children during their most difficult journeys, while raising awareness and rallying communities to join the fight against childhood cancer. And whereas, the city of Batavia recognizes the strength, courage, and resilience of children and families affected by cancer, and commends the dedication of healthcare providers, researchers, advocacy organizations, and volunteers who work tirelessly to provide care, comfort, and hope. And whereas, by shining a light on childhood cancer during the month of September, we reaffirm our community's commitment to supporting affected families, promoting research, and advancing the fight for a cure. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Jeffrey D. Shilke, Mayor of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Batavia, Illinois, and encourage all residents to join in activities and events that raise awareness, show support, and honor the children and families whose lives have been forever changed by pediatric cancer. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shilke, Mayor. On your honor, I move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sofa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
12 yes, no-no, two absent.
On your honor, if I may, Cal's Angels is a great organization that my family actually utilized back in 2020. And they do so much good for families affected by cancer. And we have somebody here today.
Very good.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight on behalf of Cal's Angels. My name is Rachel Gunderson. I'm the Director of Development, so I oversee all of our donor strategy and donor activity at Cal's Angels. On behalf of the families that we serve, and the organizations and individuals that support us, thank you for shining a light on September being Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month. Our phrase that we coined, September, we're trying to chase gold. So you'll see a lot of schools and businesses with yard signs everywhere. A lot of the high schools do a gold night, so it's a varsity game during September. The football players will wear yellow socks, or any varsity sport that's taking place that week, whatever they designate. We provide any and all kind of gold apparel that the school could possibly want. We sell T-shirts at a reduced rate for $10, so we want the stadium to be a sea of gold. And it's really to bring awareness to the fact that only 4% of federal funding supports childhood cancer research, which is just unacceptable. The advances that have been made in research and treatment and therapy options for kids in the last 20 years is sadly very, very minimal. So what we do at Cal's Angels, we have a core thing of three pillars. We grant wishes, we raise awareness, and we fund research. I'll briefly touch on each, but my point is to just thank you again for supporting us and making such a proclamation. One of the first ways that families come to know us is when they receive a diagnosis in the hospital, they are usually expected to start treatment immediately. So they have no bag with them. They have no overnight supplies. So one of the first things is the Child Life Specialist, which is a hospital or a clinician, social worker. They make their rounds to new diagnosed patients, and they give them a Cal's Angels bag full of overnight essentials. It's in a huge thermal cooler bag. There's a QR code on there that they can scan, which leads them directly to our website, which explains our wish program. So if the family wants to, then they can apply for a wish. Oftentimes, families will digest what their diagnosis means. They can read all about cancer research and cancer, the different types of cancer, the different treatment therapies on our website, and how we serve our families. Many times, they will come back and apply for a wish. What we have adopted in the last year, which is pretty remarkable, is we don't just provide a wish for the child. We provide a wish for all siblings as well. One of the things that we have seen in the almost 20 years of being around is that a cancer diagnosis, much like a diagnosis of any kind, it differently impacts each member of the family. And siblings are oftentimes left to be carted around by neighbors or other family members while the parents are triaging with the patient that's in, especially if they are in overnight treatment regularly. So we put an emphasis on treating the family as a unit, because cancer affects every single member of that immediate family and external. But our focus is on the immediate family. Okay, so that's our wish program. We raise awareness. So anytime during the month of September, we have a whole number of businesses that join forces with us. So if it's a restaurant, we provide coasters and napkin rings and T-shirts for the staff, all free of charge. It's just to bring awareness to the fact that September is Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month. Separately, then, our research pillar is we provide strategic research grants to specific clinicians that come to us and say, "We think this research project can really move the needle on childhood cancer." And we are very specific with how we decide if we are going to support or not. We don't typically put money in a black bucket, the black bucket hole of research, as it's coined many times. We want to know that this therapy, or whatever it is that they're studying, we can see translatable direct correlations with improvements in therapy so that our kids are affected in a great way. We have a number of annual fundraising events that take place that support the work that we do. The fundraising work supports all of the programmatic efforts that we offer to our families free of charge. So if you're interested in learning more about how we work and how we serve, you can visit cal'sangels.org. If you would like any information, please feel free to reach out to me. My contact info is on the website. If you are a business owner in the area and this has piqued your interest, please reach out. We would love to partner in any way that's meaningful to you, that helps the kids. So, there's any questions?
Questions?
Well, thank you for coming down.
Thank you so much for having me.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rachel.
Okay, moving to 8.5, Approval of City of Batavia Municipal Energy Policy. Who's got this one?
Yeah, so this was the version that you approved at your last Cal meeting. It addressed some of the concerns about wanting to incorporate Greenest Region Compact, as well as climate action planning, and sought to address some of the feedback and comments made by city council members and others. I'd like to answer any questions.
Very good. And it truly is a plan that we'll review, depending on what the state decides. We may have to review it more often. So it's a good start, I'll say that. And I believe it's something that we can utilize and review on a regular basis so we stay current with what the reality of the world is.
I think it's best described as a work in progress, that there's probably some parts of this we don't really know yet totally, and we need to get further down the road. So, you know, let's not make it real strong, but we're on the road to try to put something together here. Somebody want to make a motion? Motion in second? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf? I'm sorry.
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Aye. Wolf?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
12 yes, no-no, two absent.
Motion approved. All right, moving then to 8.6, Ordinance 2025-041, Dissolving TIF Number 1 Fund and Terminating Designation as an Economic Development Project Area. Scott Buning? Scott Buning, this issue.
I didn't know if one of the aldermen wanted to take it or not, but yes, this is the ordinance that would terminate TIF 1. The statutory limit for TIF 1 is ending at the end of this year. What we are proposing is a passage of an ordinance that would then terminate the TIF at the end of this year. I would record this document with the Recorder's Office and the Clerk's Office that would then notify everybody that looks at recorded documents that, you know, this has been terminated. We've already sent termination letters to the various taxing bodies, so they are aware of that. Laura in her report will have two graphs that show some of the information that you would request in regards to the breakdown for each of the taxing bodies, what they would in theory get, as well as, you know, the amounts of money that we have received and used since the TIF inception, or I should say, the EAV that's been generated, so.
I had asked for that, the data for that, so I wanted to bring that up tonight because that's something that I think we need to share. As this TIF gets dissolved at the end of this, it now provides $108,000 a year to the city. The Forest Preserve gets $61,000. Township and Roads gets 17. The School District gets $747,000 a year off of this. And College, Wobonzie College, gets $59,000. The Park District gets $71,000. And the Library gets $57,000. So all of that money that was created in that area from the building that was done there and the increase in the valuation of that, instead of being used in all the projects that we did downtown here, now goes to the districts to spend. So it was a great benefit for our downtown, and now it's going to be a great benefit for all the districts to get that money.
One of the first in the area to do one. That's another interesting part of the whole deal.
Worked very well.
Did bring some positive changes to downtown Batavia and very specifically along the Depot Pond and other places.
I also want to say thank you for the report over the years of how well it's done, the new development it's brought, because it makes a very strong case for itself, I'd say.
Does somebody care to make a motion for dissolving it?
So moved.
Motion in second for dissolving Ordinance 2025- approving Ordinance 2025-041, Dissolving TIF Number 1 Fund and Terminating Designation of an Economic Development Project Area. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item 8.7, Resolution 2025-110, Our Authorization to Execute First Amendment Master Services Agreement between the City of Batavia and Batavia DC Corporation. Laura Newman.
Yes, we had some robust discussion about this at the Committee of the Whole Meeting last week. This is an amendment to the Master Services Agreement that was previously approved by the City Council with regard to providing power to this data center. The amendment addresses the provision of water and sewage services to the data center in response to City Council's concerns regarding the usage of water in the cooling system. The data center has agreed that they will not use more than 1,000 average daily gallons of water for their cooling system. And then also that they will not conduct the blockchain computation as part of the services at this data center. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions and/or discussion.
Simon.
I was just going to make a statement that back at the July 21st meeting, I was a no vote on that original MSA, and so I will just continue being a no vote tonight.
This is one of these that we got that's got a ways to go before we get to a final termination. I mean, this could, a year from now, this could be off the table and be gone if it doesn't continue to go on what we think is the right opinions to do. I sit here, you know, a thousand gallons, it seems like, you know, we got a lot of fire trucks in town that carry a thousand gallons of water on them. And I mean, that's, in the context of things, in my opinion, that's not a lot of water. I mean, when one Batavia fire truck can carry a thousand gallons of water and that the big building that we're talking about building here, I just, I don't know. You know, I'm all for exploring it and moving forward, but I think we got to show ourselves that we got something here that really is going to do something. So there's a lot of questions yet to be answered.
We have comparison. The EPA on their website provided a statistic that on average, an American uses 82 gallons of water per day, per person.
I can understand that, but a thousand gallons for a big data center? Man, that seems like not a lot. So do we want a motion then to approve resolution? Is that what we're?
Yes, please.
Motion for resolution, Approval of Resolution 2025-110-R. Does somebody care to make that in the form of a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Mayor.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see it. Certainly.
Good evening. Susan Russo, I would like to begin my remarks tonight by saying that I am not against having a data center located in Batavia. In fact, the planned location for this data center is appropriate. However, as I have stated before, the negotiations for the data center have missed and continue to miss many opportunities. These missed opportunities include the opportunity to address energy resource decisions, such as relief from Batavia's Prairie State coal-generated electricity burden, and defining the source of electricity for this data center and its backup generators. The opportunity to educate the public about the non-monetary benefits of this data center. And finally, and maybe most importantly, the opportunity to engage energy experts in these negotiations to help optimize Batavia's opportunities. Instead, Batavia relied on its city staff to lead these negotiations while the $2 billion Hut 8 Corporation engaged the services of Kessler Energy, a firm owned by an Illinois energy expert with 36 years of experience in electricity generation, large load management, power supply procurement, and risk management. And here we are again tonight with another missed opportunity. It was Hut 8 that voluntarily offered to install a closed-loop cooling system and to truck the water in for its needs. Instead of holding Hut 8 to those promises, city staff has capitulated to, and city council is poised to acquiesce in, the First Amendment that does not say what it means to say. The First Amendment does not require Hut 8 to install a closed-loop cooling system. It implies that it will. The only place in the amendment where a closed-loop cooling system is mentioned is in paragraph 1 of Appendix B. The amendment actually says that water for human consumption, quote, "shall be treated separate from and independent of the terms and conditions for water and wastewater services at the facility for the closed-loop cooling system." This is clearly not a commitment to install a closed-loop cooling system. It is an implication that the closed-loop cooling system will be installed. Similarly, there is nothing in the First Amendment that states that Hut 8 will be trucking in water for the cooling system. Instead, apparently, the 1,000 gallons per day limit implies that they will be trucking the water in. The problem with contracts that do not say what they mean to say is that they are vague. Vagueness leads to litigation. And this is especially true when a party to that vague contract doesn't even know who the challenging party might be in the future. That is exactly what we have here because the Master Services Agreement permits Hut 8 to assign its rights and obligations under both the Master Services Agreement and this First Amendment to, quote, "an affiliate of Hut 8 or a data center owner, end user, tenant, or customer of Hut 8 without Batavia's prior written consent." Last week, city staff stated that because the data center will be there for decades and future technologies cannot be predicted, Hut 8 should not be held to a cooling technology that might become obsolete in the future. A council member took his concern for Hut 8 one step further by asking Hut 8 whether the First Amendment, quote, "clears things up for Hut 8," end quote. And that he was fine with the First Amendment, quote, "so long as it is clear to Hut 8," end quote. Both city staff and city council have a duty to represent and act on behalf of and for the benefit of Batavia's residents and the services and resources Batavia residents rely on, not the businesses like Hut 8 it contracts with. While economic development is an important part of those benefits that we all enjoy, it is not the only benefit that enhances the quality of life in Batavia. I hope that you will remember this as you make your decision tonight. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Shulkey and City Council. Thank you for having me. My name is Casey Hubert. I am a longtime Batavia resident. Although looking around, I think most of you have me beat on that. And I'm also a Batavia Public Student. So I have a statement regarding the water cooling loop. I'm worried that it only took 11 days for the city council to learn about and then fully approve the electric supply agreement with Hut 8. And if this amendment is approved, it will only take another 11 days, including three holidays. Now, the source of our electricity and management of our water resources are critical to the future and well-being of the Batavia community. Knowledge and community pressure are often the only tools that we as residents and taxpayers can use to express our opinions and to influence our local government's decisions. In Illinois, public bodies exist to, quote, "aid in the conduct of people's businesses," end quote. Now, city council's hurried actions on the data center agreement have severely constrained Batavians' rights to aid these data center decisions and become informed and have their own opinions. Now, city council's actions have also restricted the time and knowledge that Batavians need to provide meaningful input on the data center decisions. It is in my opinion that city council conduct regarding the Hut 8 data center is not a good example of government transparency, and we deserve, as taxpayers and residents, to have more knowledge. And I would also like to say that along with Susan's comment on the closed-loop system, they made a verbal promise to us to implement that. And if we pass this amendment, they may very well break that. And my question is, if they break that promise, how many more will they also break? Thank you for concerning my opinion. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Gavin. I'm also a student at Batavia High School. So yeah, I have, here are a few, a couple of questions that are not being answered by the First Amendment to the data center agreement. Where is Hut 8 getting the water it is trucking to the data center site? Is the water coming from the same aquifer that Batavia gets its water from? If it is, the First Amendment really does not address the public concern about water use that was raised when the data center agreement was first approved in July. Was any consideration given to water reuse for the data center's cooling system? Could water from Batavia's water treatment plant be used for cooling rather than the drinking water from Batavia's deep wells? Granting the data center water usage tonight may not have an immediate impact on Batavia, but it does have implications for the future. As Batavia's aquifer and other water sources in the region become strained by development, growing demand, and climate factors, we may wish we had regulated the use of water more thoughtfully. And I know you mentioned it may not be, you know, a lot of water, but it may add up, or this is something to consider. And thanks for giving me the stage tonight, and yeah, thank you.
Evan, can you tell me your last name for the record?
Gavin Warpensky.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Who else? Or Lancy?
You know, all I have to say, no pun intended, but a lot of what was said does not hold water. Again, for context, this is the amount of water that a large household uses. Probably a lot less than some households. I know a few that take a lot of showers. This is crazy. If we're going to sit here and talk about how much water this thing's going to use, we need to do a complete reevaluation of all the businesses, our quarry. Who are the biggest water users in our town? Does everyone know? I mean, it's insane that we're putting this up on this pedestal like this needs to be worried about when, for this specific business. This is crazy, guys. Let it go.
Who else?
Your Honor. Thank you to the people that spoke for your comments. I really appreciated hearing that. Everyone knows that at the July 21st meeting, I had raised some concerns about this project. And by the end of that meeting, I was comfortable moving forward with that project based on the terms that were agreed upon from Hut 8. We had the public come and speak afterwards, and they warned us that to have things in writing before we move forward with the project because time has shown us that companies will change their terms. And here we are, August 26, at that meeting, what we had agreed upon was not in that amendment. So I'm going to be a no vote tonight because I'm not comfortable with the language that's in that agreement. I don't feel that that's what we agreed upon. And I'm not comfortable that we aren't putting language in there that shows us that the water is being sourced from somewhere else, that we changed the terms of the water usage. There's just different changes in there that I'm not comfortable with. So for those reasons and the ones that people spoke tonight, I'm going to be a no vote tonight.
Everything has been completely open and transparent. There's been, there's no hiding the ball under the shell. There's no covert situation going on here. I mean, this is just a business who wants to establish their base here in Batavia for something that is all over the place right now. I don't think that there's been any amendments that are causing anything, any difference to the situation if you really look at it. They're not taking 500,000 gallons of water from a Batavia aquifer. They're trucking the water in. They're also going, in terms of the usage, up to 1,000 gallons a day. I mean, that's 10 people. 10 people a day is basically what.
Alderman Lancy? I just wanted to make one more comment that, you know, I also think we, as far as the closed-loop cooling system goes and people's concerns around that, number one, it's my professional opinion that they will use a closed-loop, closed-loop system today. Technologies change, things change. We cannot get in these people's world that intricately, in my opinion. We can't tell them, this is how you do business today, this is how you do business forever. I don't think a lot of business owners would like that, and it's not the way America works. So we zone the land, we tell them, you know, we have them present to us, they give us an idea of their business, they go run that business. We control things like how much water they can get and things like that, not what they're going to do with it once it's in there. We control how it's going to be when it comes out of there, you know. So these are the types of things that are not business-friendly, those types of conversations. And, you know, I'll leave it at that, but we need to, yeah, concentrate on what matters. There's a lot more here in this deal that everyone knows about that needs to be thought about, so let the water go.
I guess what I would want to make sure that gets shared is that the fact, you know, I brought up what the water usage was going to be, how they were going to get it in, where they're going to truck it from, even if it comes out of the same aquifer that we draw our water from, the reality is that there are several cities from Jaliata all the way out to, I think, Plano that are going to be taking water from another source, not from the aquifer that we're in. So as far as water management goes for the area, that's a positive. So, you know, I don't think I'm worried about the wells that we have. I don't think our staff is worried about that because as the water levels, to me, would stay sable or even go up, when you take those other cities off of the aquifer, that will not present an issue for our ratepayers. I'd hate to be somebody that lives in Yorkville, you know, or Plainfield or wherever they're going to take the water from because it's easily $50 million or more of the ratepayers getting water from Lake Michigan. So, you know, I think it's a prudent thing to do. We could have a warehouse built on that property that raises the property value $1 or $2 million. This is going to raise the property value by $500 million for this, this thing. This is one of the reasons why data centers are prevalent everywhere. If you look at the ones that have problems, they're four to five times the size of this one, and, you know, Meta even bought part of a power plant so that they would be guaranteed the power. That means that power doesn't go out into the grid to get somewhere else. So those are the ones, to me, that would cause problems, the ones that use open cooling systems and dump that hot water steam into the atmosphere are a problem. The closed-loop system, even if they have to fill it up every five years, to me, is not an issue. I just feel like, in my mind, I wish there was some technology so we could sell them the water every five years and make the money off of selling them the water, not just make money off of, you know, what they discharge into our system.
Yeah, you know, first off, I'll put it out there that I'll probably be a yes vote here, and the reasons for that are substantively, the water levels we're talking about don't feel like a lot to me. We have a couple industries in that neighborhood that are using 10 times as much water daily on that front. So from a substance perspective, this particular issue, the water issue, you know, I don't feel like we have much grounds for complaining here. But I also want to hesitate from dismissing the complaints and the concerns and the thoughts that we've heard here as well. You know, I want to thank Susan and Casey and Gavin for coming up here. I was on vacation for, you know, two weeks. I missed two meetings, and I almost missed every single vote on the data center. I wasn't here for the introduction of it, and I wasn't here for the passage of it. Just so happens this amendment came along, and so I, I'm now on the record for the data center, but I do think that we shouldn't be blind or deaf, perhaps, to some of the comments we heard tonight, that things came by very quickly for a very big project. I think some of the concerns are well-intentioned, and we should be thinking about these sorts of things. So while I will be a yes vote, I also want to thank everybody for coming and saying those things and that it should be taken seriously as we consider these things moving forward. So on a process side, it would be, I think those grievances are something we should take very, very seriously.
Vocal singer?
One more, just thank you to Susan and to the students. It takes a lot of courage. Susan, we get to hear from you quite a bit, but it takes a lot of courage for you guys to stand up here and bring these thoughts forward, and I really appreciate you taking the time to write those out and to come here and talk to us. Thank you so much. And I agree with Alderman Malone, it's important to give those some credence. So thank you.
What else in the city council? So we have a motion.
We got a motion in a second.
In a second. Any further discussion? Kirk called the roll then.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
No.
Lohman?
No.
Peeper?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Nine yes, three no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Laura, you're nine one.
Okay, just some brief matters to share with you. Received a new proposal, I think I distributed to all of you from the Batavia Environmental Commission regarding the Art of the Fox Garden. We met with them to walk the area, and they made some alterations to where the garden was going to go to accommodate some of the electric infrastructure that is back there, but I think it's really going to look terrific. They've got a very solid plan, and the budget that they've presented is $3,500 to $4,000, so not at a level that necessarily requires city council approval, but just wanted to make sure that everyone is supportive of us moving forward with this project with them. Great. And then something else, I want to share some public works projects that are going on. The street program resurfacing has been completed for the most part, and the remaining sidewalk replacements will start next week. And also, the food pantry is on schedule. The buildout should be completed by September 18th, and then they'll be ready for relocation. They have a lease in their current facility through September 30th, and you can check their website where there may be opportunities to assist them in their move from one facility to another. It'd be nice for the community to help them out with that. And then also internally, we're holding meetings with all of the department heads to talk about capital improvement plans and personnel needs for next year. That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
I just want to add that I appreciate the flowers and the heights and everything because I'm going to take this to use in my own, my own yard for design, so it takes away some of my stress.
I thought the same. It looks beautiful. Never heard of some of those plants before. Yes.
One suggestion unrelated to what you reported, the, in terms, you know, we recently revitalizing our committee structure, I would request, in the past, the memos that came out with the agenda always indicated what, what committee it was.
I agree. I think that might be something that changed with our new agenda software. I haven't ever seen the letters in the new agenda software.
I think it would clear up a lot of.
Yeah, I do too.
I just, I realized that when Scott had mentioned he wasn't sure if a council member was going to take it.
Right. Thank you.
I think it would clear up confusion if we're going to have that.
Yeah, we were just not aware that that was something you guys paid attention to and wanted, so we will add that back in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, do we have other business from the council? Alderman Beck?
Something we had discussed a few weeks ago with the flag discussion was other ways to acknowledge causes or issues within council chambers, and so if another other person wanted to join me, I wanted to have an actual formal conversation about what that might look like so that when the need arises, for example, suicide prevention and the 988 hotline having some visibility perhaps during council meetings or somewhere in city hall, wanted to discuss that and see if there was a majority of council that agreed and approved.
It'd be a great thing to have on the scroll that runs out in the hallway with the giant monitors we have, that that would be something good to be there.
I'll have to wear some gold socks this month, though.
Yep. I got my pink socks ready for.
Gold socks for this month.
In terms of other business, I forgot to hand these out at the time of the proclamation, but I do have gold ribbons for everybody.
And I do have these for, if I didn't leave one over on your side already.
Hold on a moment, do you want to bring some?
I just said I would join in support with Abby, which she's talking about.
And if that's something we could do soon, there is a 988 flag that SPS has already produced that if we could get it up still in the month of September, that would be really cool.
Bring that forward under the current flag ordinance, and we can talk about that one.
So is the request to open up a discussion about the flag ordinance again?
No.
Because what, and the city attorney is here tonight, and any place where you are going to be putting the flags, doesn't matter if it's on a flagpole or if it's on a wall or if it's scrolling on your message boards, when you open that up to external organizations, you run the risk of that becoming a public forum. Is that?
I wouldn't.
That's correct. I think what Alderman Beck was talking more about, just providing more informational awareness at meetings and all that, things that.
No, it was a visual, just very similar to the flag, just not on a flagpole, following the same process as our flag ordinance where we have a discussion, we have a vote, and if we all agree or a majority of us agrees, then it's something that we're able to display.
May I propose an amendment, maybe, to your motion? If we're doing Robert's rules properly here, probably not. Perhaps we could, we could consider a space where we can promote and inform citizens on the proclamations we have made as a council. If we make it a proclamation space where we can then say we have proclaimed it Suicide Prevention Month, so we can put all the information about suicide prevention there, Child Cancer Awareness Month, we can put all the information on Child Cancer Awareness Month, but perhaps if we frame it as a proclamation space for proclamations from the board, we can have a more focused, intentional discussion about what that space is used for.
Friendly amendment, thanks.
Friendly amendment, thank you.
I still want my gold socks this month.
Do we need folks to join on that friendly amendment to get it on the next agenda? All right, we're good.
I have one. Just want to say that it was an excellent weekend. The Black Party was packed with people for the entire time I was down there. Want to thank the Park District and the Depot Museum staff that ran around all day trying to make sure everybody got in. We had 75 cars in the car show, just absolutely hundreds of people out there taking pictures. We had a drone up above that got some pretty cool footage of downtown, and I think just about everybody in the food court sold out by the time it was done.
Thank you to Batavia Main Street, who hosted that event.
Right.
My three-year-old daughter says she wants to do that every day.
Does she want to clean cars?
She might. You'd be surprised.
The final issue of business is the mayor's report, and I just have a short one. I'm going to, I got it printed up, I haven't distributed yet. I'm going to send each of you a copy of a memo. It's a picture, it's a story of the, I hear it on the front page of the Aurora Beacon News today about Warehouse 55 moving to Batavia. And Warehouse 55 is moving into the old, what was it, Candle Store last? Yeah, Hearth and Hammer at Water and First Street. And in talking to some of my folks I know from the city of Aurora, they're quite dismayed that Hearth and Hammer's space is being taken over by this Warehouse 55 because that was one that they were really hopeful was going to be a big boom to Aurora, but they are now wanting to move to Batavia because of the space and the parking, and it puts them closer into a tri-city situation where they have a lot of, you know, similar people coming into the tri-cities to visit those types of stores. The other one I want to make mention is the replacement for Berkeley's grocery store over at Webster and South Van Buren Street. That's a family, again from Aurora, that's moved up here. They, they have bakeries in Aurora, but they're now going into the grocery business big time with this one. And I just want to pay a word of tribute to our Community Development Department and Anthony Islam, who's out in the audience here, for all the work that they did on both of these, because this didn't happen overnight, and I got brought in on meetings with both of the different folks, and I want to say that our staff really did a wondrous job of kind of selling Batavia to these folks as to what we are doing here and what we can be and the numbers that we got, the number of new houses that are being built. We've got a lot of positive splendor going on here that I think our staff is doing a great job of explaining and promoting and whatever, so I'm, I've already talked with them today, and I think there's some more to come, as they say on TV. And so we are in a good position to kind of remake our downtown business district into a bigger and grander and greater place that's going to draw a bunch of folks in here that haven't been here before. So we've got a lot going. I have the mayor down in the south suburbs, next to Diamond down there, which is where the Pope comes from, and she wants to come up and visit Batavia on a Saturday morning and see the Riverwalk and the River Street Market and others. So the word is spreading that we're a place to come and see new ideas for developing business districts, and so I just want to take our hats, my hat off to the staff for the good job that they seem to be doing about really bringing this thing around and presenting Batavia with a very favorable business climate, which is something that I think all of us can agree we would like. No further business? I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Executive session.
Excuse me, executive session.
I'll make the motion that we go into executive session for the sale and purchase of electricity and no action afterwards.
Second.
Motion in second for executive session. Kirk called the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no no, two absent.